All right, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the General Government Committee. Today is Monday, the 25th. The time is now 3:06. I'm convening this meeting to order. Today, we're going to be discussing the proposed ordinance on unpaid ordinance, ordinance and fines. Today, we're being joined by a city solicitor, Steve Bonacanti, from the Law Department. We're also being joined by twenty more of joining us. Orcafo, Kathy Bueno, and extraordinary controller, Steve Lonigan, members of the President. Just to give you a quick recap, why are we here and how we got here? So we started looking at the revenue, how we can create more revenue for the city, how we can attract more revenue, and the unpaid taxes cut or I. We had a meeting last week, I believe, Kathy, in which I was talking about an update on the open.gov. And so I'm glad that that's up and running, that's going to help us stop the bleeding for that matter. As a result of that, we found out that approximately just between one to three million dollars in outstanding tickets. I just to find out exactly what the right amount is, and hopefully in the next sixty, ninety days, we will know that. As a result of that, we realized that solicitors' tickets are all tickets. A lot of them, we have to wait a long time to collect them. So we're basically looking two ways here. One, to see how we can stop the bleeding, how we can, we can put teeth into these unpaid ordinance tickets, and to let people know that we are serious about quality of life. I also have to say that this ordinance applies to everyone, not only homeowners, but business owners, and even out-of-state landlords, which are a problem in Springfield. And so, just to give you a quick recap of what the ordinance says, we call it this, the, excuse me, the Springfield Enforcement and Public Accountability Ordinance. And what does this do? So the first time that somebody gets a fine, a quality of life fine, after thirty days, there's no late fee. The first notice is nothing. After thirty days, there's a modest ten-dollar fee. After ninety days, it includes, goes up to twenty-five monthly penalty. At six months of non-payment, a lien may be placed on the property, but only after multiple notices and opportunities to resolve the matter. This also calls for a creation of what we are calling, and by the way, this is something that councilors, Brian Santinello, myself, have put together, this ordinance. We are looking to create, within this ordinance, an assistance program to help low-income homeowners, as defined by the yearly federal income guidelines, for the elderly sixty-five and above, that meet their obligations without fear of losing their homes. Three strikes, and you're out, ruled after three strikes, after three tickets, ninety days, multiple attempts. I'm sorry, you're just blowing the city up, and you really don't care about our quality of life. And so after we do that, we are going to look to be publishing the names, whether it be in the city website, in a newspaper, that's up for discussion still. Yeah, a little bit of, a little bit of shame, because if you pay your taxes, if you keep your property up-to-date, good for you. And if I do that in my house, and my neighbor is done, guess what happens to my property value? It goes down. And so that I cannot accept. And then we're going to be asking for quarterly council oversight, that we require quarterly reports to the city council on ticket enforcements, how many were issued, how many remain to pay, how many enter assistance programs, and how many reach the first-strike threshold. As I have said before, this is just a draft, nothing is set in stone. The only thing that I probably have to do is send a clear message to people that we are serious about our quality of life, and that we're serious about collecting money, which the city so desperately needs. I feel like I broke a record, actually. Okay, with that being said, I have asked our law department to take a look at this, tell us what they think. As I say, I'm open, I'm Councilor Santinello, for how we can make this better, how we can make it efficient, so that we can close those loopholes. Who wants to fight it out from the bottom?
I'll start, you and I, Mr. Chairman. But Tom is the one who knows it more intuitively. We took a look at what your request is, and we respect your request, and we understand what you're trying to accomplish, and we don't have any disagreement with that. The challenge is how we get it approached. Violations and fines comes into this area, and it's a political terminology that I was raised with, which is, it's a complicated issue with no easy solutions. What I can tell you, I think, overall, is that the city does its best and is up-to-date.
We are being joined by Councilor Tim Allen. Please forgive me, if you allow me, solicitor.
No, it's a...
We're being joined by, in chambers, Councilor Tim Allen, thank you for joining us. And remotely, we're also being joined by Councilor Brian Santinello. And I would like to also recognize the people online, remote. We have Lissy Hackett, Deputy Coford, Lissy Hackett, and Commissioner Selet, Kiefer Kornoff, Enforcement. I'm Marco Jacob, also for California. So, what do you think?
So there are really, I would say there are really two buckets of liens. One, well, of fines, fines that can be leaned and fines that cannot be leaned. The fines that can be leaned, whether it be on real estate, on motor vehicles, or the like, the city is fully enforcing and is up to speed on. So what does that bucket again, remind, what does that pertain to? If there is a building code violation at a property in the city of Springfield, that a house, or a house, or residence, or a commercial building, or the like, we find that individual, and if they do not pay within a certain period of time, they ultimately can get leaned on to the real estate tax, so that whenever there is a sale to the property, the city can collect those monies. And so there are, those are enforcement mechanisms that we have. And I'll defer to Steve Lonigan into the greater, he has that much greater detail than I, but you have those buckets, you have another example that we can enforce, our parking violations. So when there is a parking violation in the city of Springfield, we do have the ability through the registration of motor vehicles to attach it to somebody's driver's license. And so when they go to re-register their car, or to update their license, those, but those parking fines will be triggered, and people cannot, cannot renew their license or renew their registration until they pay those fines. So another good way of enforcement mechanisms. Quality of life issues for individuals who, where it's not on a certain residence that they own. For example, if it's a noise violation that occurs, let's say, in a apartment paired to their house, and we issue a ticket or a fine for that, there really is no enforcement mechanism for us to reach and apply for that. Whether it's a noise issue, whether it's a loitering issue, whether it's a panhandling issue, or something to that effect, the city can, can issue as many fines as we'd like in those circumstances, but the collectability is the real challenge, because we don't have any enforcement mechanism to do that. And so as much as, and that is what the real accumulation of a lot of these fines are that we have, that are, or they're almost uncollectible, because we don't have any mechanisms to do that. So we taking a look at the language? I would say to you that the, that the state law and regulation and city ordinances that follow that try to be extremely rigid and disciplined about how they treat individuals, and they try to treat individuals unilaterally the same, whether they come from, they have, whether it's an age bracket, whether it's a financial demographic bracket. Because enforceability, when you get into that gray area as to how are you going to treat people who may be asked for additional time, or asked for a waiver of a late fee, all it always leads to a challenging situation, and one that we don't want to get into, because you're starting to disparately treat the citizens and the residents who are coming in. If one person's crying in the blues on something, or says they can't financially pay for it, and then, for whatever reason, and you're giving staff members the authority to either waive or to amend those fines, those are, those are circumstances that is ripe with peril. And we don't want to get into that, we want to be extremely disciplined and treat everybody equally. And so that has been our preliminary review. What I do think we want to do is try to figure out how we can get our ordinances to sync with the state law, and, and try to encourage the state to see if there's other ways for us to be able to reach and apply for collections of the monies. Right now, we really don't have much of a mechanism, because we have to oftentimes defer to the state. And so Steve Lonigan is going to tell you that his, the way he has to take approach his job is extremely structured and framed, that he has to, he can only stay within those rules, and that's it. So Tom has done a tremendous amount of research, I don't know if you want to hear from Tom next?
Absolutely, if you think so.
It might be better to hear from Mr. Lonigan. I mean, I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but I think the solicitor is right. There's, there's, you know, looking at the proposal, there's just some specifics we really need to nail down, and things we need to be very careful. We're consistent with general law, because there is, you know, the statutes at the state level do address some of the things we're talking about. So, you know, like the lien bridge is a good example of that. There's, there's some timeframe specifications of that, we need to match those up. Again, Mr. Lonigan might be able to see more operationally to some of the issues with the proposal.
Steve, you're open. When we, when someone gets, I'll use code enforcement, because it's easiest one, gets code enforcement violation on their property, and decide not to pay it. Every year, when we do the actual tax bill, which is a third quarter tax bill, we do, we produce a list, send it over to code enforcement, they verify it, make sure they're still correct, and we haven't missed anything, send it back to us, then we file that at the registry deed as a municipal lien. Once that's done, we're able to then lean that bill to the tax bill. And then it becomes part of the tax bill, and we collect it in our collection mechanism the same as any, as real estate taxes. And so that, that's very effective, because if someone's escrowing, a lot of times escrow companies, you send the bill, they pay the bill, and then...
And that's all we're doing right now.
That's how we do it, that's, that's what we do by law right now. And so then...
I thought, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I thought the lien that we are placing goes to the deed.
Yes, it actually goes to the tax bill. We have to set it up as a municipal lien first. So there's two actually, leaning it twice in essence.
That's right, yeah, there's two separately, one is on the, the real estate bill, and the other one becomes a part of the tax.
So please, if you could draw this to me with a crayon, okay? I know what I know, I know what I know. I'm an uncle head, I get a ticket. Okay, let's say in this case, it's related to the house, I give him a loan, something. That get, if I don't pay it, it gets attached to my property tax.
Will be attached, eventually attached.
And the next year, when I make the payments, it goes, it reflects that fine already.
Your tax bill on the third quarter, when we get them on the tax bill, on third quarter tax bill, you'll see a line that says that, but it's your taxes plus that additional lien, if you will. And at that point, then, when you come in and pay, it's, I'm not paying anyone's, I'm just going to pay my taxes. The way it's set up, again by law, is that we pay interest and fees first, and the principal last. So that, that ticket's going to get paid before any real estate tax gets paid.
Awesome, okay.
So you can't say, oh, I'm not paying, I'm just going to pay my real estate tax, I'm not paying that. It automatically pays that.
That's, that's going to put me behind on my taxes, which goes there, affect my deed.
It could affect, yeah. It's ultimately enforced by a tax title quotient, you know, multiple.
Potential, yes.
Yeah, in theory, that's...
Well, that's not what the city is looking for, of course, they want people to have their homes.
So we, and when someone comes into the collections office, that's always explained to them, like, please understand, this is how it goes, and most people understand.
Okay, go ahead, continue.
So then, so that's the easiest way, but there are some that we can't file as municipal liens. The example, I always use the noise as you walk down the street. I'm in front of your house, counselor, and I have, you know, a music blaring in my car. They won't, that can't be attached to my property, but I'll get the ticket. So that one, you can't lean to a tax bill, and that becomes a different issue. Regarding the payment plans, we do payment plans for any property that's in tax title, so the, which the city has perfected, lean on the property. And at that point, there's a whole process of down payment, how many months the plan's going to be, et cetera. But we work with the taxpayer to determine that, what suits them, and their ability to pay back as best they can. There is sometimes, unfortunately, when we have to say, sorry, this is the best we can do. And we do it that way. As far as late fee goes, by state law, we, late fees are capped at thirty dollars. And so I don't, I've never seen where it's broken up per se, but in total, it's like, we can't do first quarter group with twenty dollars on it, and then the fourth quarter, put another twenty on it.
So when you say, Tom, you mean...
It can't be any more than thirty dollars for the, the information.
In fact, that was going to be my question there, and so we could do an increment if we choose at the municipal.
I mean, you could set, you could set the late fee for the, these tickets anywhere from five to thirty, but you can't, I don't, I don't know, and I defer to the law department, that if you can do it, like, after one month, it's this much, next month, it's that much more, as long as it totaled.
Let me go to the chase. Basically, I know my councilors have a bunch of questions, but if you allow me. So would it be easier to just set one fee period, or an increment? I'm also trying to give people a bit of a break here as well, because if you say anywhere from five to thirty, so again, it's the same question, is can we do the income, ten, twenty-five, or whatever?
I move for that part to the law department. I will say for logistics and putting it in the system, one fee is the easiest, but...
If we have one fee, what would you recommend, Steve? You know, to give us...
I mean, I think there's, I think there's two things being discussed here. So the, Mr. Lonigan is exactly right, the state is very comprehensively set forth, you know, how you're going to enter into an agreement to pay a tax bill that's outstanding, and how much a city could charge you for late fees. That's prescribed under the statute, there's really no wiggle room. Like you said, it's a cap place, you can do lower, but you can't go above this number. We're not talking about that specific type of charge. We're talking about you're doing a late fee on a ticket, right? Like, you have a ticket that's outstanding, so it's a late fee on a citation. So in that case, you, you're looking at, well, it's really a fine, right? It's not a fee. You know, a fee is something that you're, you're charging somebody when, when they're paying the actual costs. You have a cost associated with the service, there's a fee for that, permit fee is a good example, right? There's costs associated with issuing permits, maintaining databases, et cetera. There's your fee, you know? This is a fine. So a fine is something that's meant to be punitive, or to, to act as a deterrent from someone who's going to, you know, presumably, in this case, not pay a citation for quality of life. So in that case, the, the way the law works is, it has to have, you know, your, your late penalty has to be reasonably related to what the fine itself is. So I think it would be, you know, the, when I read the proposal, what I thought more would make sense is maybe something more like a percentage base, where, you know, you have a twenty-five-dollar citation is eligible under our ordinances, for example. Charging a thirty-dollar late fee for the twenty-five-dollar ticket seems not quite right when there's tickets that are a hundred dollars, and you'd be charging the same fee. So, you know, perhaps it kind of bears, you know, benefit to examine a kind of scale that's based more on the value of the ticket itself, as opposed to a set number. And again, Mr. Lonigan is right, if you're talking about late fees associated with tax title and tax liens is exactly right, you can't go beyond what the statute requires. And even in our case, you know, there'd be a limit to what we could do, you know? There's a reasonable component to this. And again, tying it to the type of violation seems like it makes the most sense there.
Okay, all right, thank you, Tom. Steve, anything else? All right, so question before turning over to my colleagues. We got the car, solicitor, you have mentioned the cars. We were having recently, we gave, we gave our permit, this is in the city council, to a, to a business, and he, initially, the complaint was noise. People came in, they complained a lot about noise in the area. Praise be to the Lord, the guy did what he was supposed to, and we agree. That got me thinking, we have a lot of noise, car emanating from vehicles here. Sometimes I can't even talk, I can't even think sometimes, it's absurd. We know we have a noise ordinance, but that's a whole different conversation with the law enforcement. But, so Lisa, I guess my same question to you is, sir. I might not understand that if they were going to give a, give a ticket for noise ordinance, for noise, that could be attached to the, to the registration or to the exit tax?
I don't think noise can, noise can if it's at a house. If you're having a big party at your house, and we show up at your house, and they issue a noise violation, then we can attach it, in theory, in health. And go through that process. And I, you know, there's the, the attachment to the real estate tax bill, and then the tax foreclosure process, the tax title foreclosure, is later on down the road, that, that second step, which is much more onerous, because now we are registering, we are recording the fine and what's owed over at the registry of deeds, and that means that no matter what, when that property is sold, we will get our money. So there's, those are two different steps, I just want to give you the kind of, there is common sense to this. There's a first step to put it on the real estate bill, and if it's not resolved, I think it's within a year's period of time that you can start to, and start to do the...
About a year.
About a year before you can start going through the, the tax title process. But again, that has to be a property that's sitting in the city of Springfield that we have jurisdiction over. If you have a noise, if they're at a park, and they're sitting in their car, and they're blaring their music, there, we can only, we can give a noise violation, but then how do we enforce that? And that becomes a challenge, because I don't believe noises was, flows through the registry of motor vehicles the same way. And so we're kind of stuck, that we don't have a real enforcement mechanism to collect that money, so it sits out there until somebody pays it, or they never pay it, no likely, they don't.
I, I look forward to, I think, I look forward to continue that conversation, because we all know that's a problem in Springfield. You know, with the amount of particular vehicle noise, it is completely absurd. All right, with that being said, all right, let me turn it over to my colleagues. Let me start with, in the chair, Mr. Councilor Allen, any questions, sir?
No, I'm following along, good conversation.
Councilor Santinello, some... Oh, we lost Councilor Santinello, I thought you had a question. Okay, very well. All right, so going back, so let me do a quick, a quick recap. Basically, you guys are saying that the fines itself are capped at thirty dollars. You probably suggested, maybe, maybe we could do a percentage based upon the fines. Okay? We, if somebody doesn't pay the fine, it goes into the property tax, right?
It could.
It could. And we have to pay interest?
Interest.
Interest, principal is lasting, eventually, they don't pay it, it could potentially affect the deed, and that's state law. Now, so Lisa, what about the part about the, the Councilor Santinello suggested about publishing the information on the papers? Steve, would you do any research on that, or the website?
I'm going to pass this to Tom before I do that, because Tom has done extensive research on this. Is that, again, I think we have an idea of where you want to go with this, to try to encourage people to pay their taxes. We, we support that wholeheartedly. Well, we try to look at it from the perspective of, will it increase the returns back to the city? And then we also have to try to compare how much it would cost us to publish that list, because that, those lists oftentimes aren't for free unless we published it only on our website.
Well, that would be, that would be a good start.
But oftentimes, what happens is that it's published in a, in a periodical, whether it's the newspaper, it's a weekly paper that covers a certain community. And that's a mechanism that cities and towns will go to, to shame people to pay more so. Tom's looked at this.
Yeah, no, I think that one of the key issues is certainly the status of the citations. Now, obviously, there's a period of time you have when municipal citation gets issued. Well, I think, when we were talking about it, it was something, or the proposal states something like a three-strikes, you're out type of rule, where if somebody has three unpaid citations, then after a set period of time, just a notice as they would get published. I think as a part of that, you would want to make sure that all of the kind of appellate rights that go with these citations are all lapsed and been taken care of. You know, you, because you could have a situation where someone's appealing a citation, they're beyond this period of time that we're prescribing, because the appeal hasn't been resolved, and then they get published, or we put their name online as if they've, in fact, done something that they, maybe they win an appeal, and that, you know, as law department does, we're looking at the worst-case scenario here. You could have a scenario where somebody was basically innocent, and got their name published by the city as, as being a scofflaw, because maybe they didn't get a notice or two, and then they caught up with it, and paid it, and fixed the problem. So it would, it really be, we'd have to be very careful about the time, where we would want to make sure that we weren't doing that. The solicitors actually, you know, is, is very accurate in describing the publication issues. If we wanted to do periodical publication, you'd have a lapse in time as you ordered the publication, you'd have the fee that goes with it, that we'd be paying upfront, that you ultimately want to collect on the back end. So then you're talking about kind of a secondary lien process that incorporates the publication costs, and you'd want to legislate that, put that in, so you were allowed to do that. So it's kind of a number of pieces that would go with publication. You know, communities do some things like this. I think we talked about this last time, where the city of Boston had, I think, when I, if I remember my research, they had done publication in a very limited sense in their website about outstanding code, like building code violations, but it wasn't, it didn't list the person's name. It really was listing a permit number and a location, you know, the building location, apartment, or what have you. So one of the other concerns that we might look at it in publishing, you know, outstanding offenders, would kind of be compliance with like, you know, what we call privacy statutes in the Commonwealth, you know, the Privacy Information Act, you know, making sure we're not publicizing anything that, that would be considered sensitive information, or not public. So, you know, not to get too far again into the weeds and some of that, but that would all want, you'd want to legislate all of that out, where you didn't have it open to interpretation that we would suddenly be publishing something where somebody just paid, maybe somebody just fixed it, and then all of a sudden, we're in a position where we, you know, we're opening ourselves up to claims. So that, that, you know, when I was thinking of publication, that's mainly what I looked at.
Right, right, I'm, I'm sure, and thank you for that, I'm just thinking aloud, you're thinking brainstorming. I'm sure that if we were going to do that, I'm sure we would have a deadline that will be made public. And if we say we're going to publish tomorrow, if you don't pay by five o'clock today...
We want to give advance notice, fully published even after the appellate period lapses, that's something that's in there.
Give you plenty of time, so nobody knows, oops, I gave you no.
Yeah, and I think that's also true for, for publications for tax purposes. I don't know, Steve, is that right, where there's like a requirement, you send something to the person before you do it?
We sent, yeah, we sent the man notice, we sent a bunch of deputy notices. We often send a letter to them too, saying you're...
We're going to publish you, right, yeah, yeah, something like that.
Then it's two weeks before we actually...
Yeah, that's right, it's like a lapse period, so...
There will be people that come in the last minute, it's too late, and they're like, well, you published my name. And they're understandably upset, because they paid it. But they paid it five minutes before the deadline, and...
I, I'm trying to be sensitive here, but at the same time, I'm trying to, I don't have the compassion for the no-ones. You're done. And so we got plenty of those enforcement in the city, and they are the ones causing trouble here in the city. Now, so we know that, at least in terms of economics, it will appear to me that publishing on the website is for free, no charge on that. But, Steve, Tom, would you suggest that instead of publishing the names, that we can just do the address? And that, that would be like, like, like trying to be more sensitive. Business is a whole different story, I think business is a whole different giant.
I would say that the real reason for publishing is to shame individuals, and you have to list their name, for them to be shameful. So.
The address, the dress doesn't do it.
Well, if you're an absentee landlord. Um, it's the people that live in the house who are gonna have to look and see where you knew that your landlord was supposed to be paying it or something.
But so wouldn't be the tenant living there that's staying is gonna be polished.
Right, but people know, like you live there, oh, your house has this, whereas if you print the name of the absentee landlord. But then again, you get in all those problems with the names too, so, it's a tough one.
I have to say, a couple of months ago, I had a veteran that called me, uh, very upset. Uh, he said to me, you know, Victor, I'm moving out, and I said, why are you moving out? Well, please forgive my graphiness, if that's a word. I got feces coming down my wall. And we got court enforcement, uh, thank you guys, they they jumped on it and they looked into it, that's not acceptable to me, I'm sorry. I believe the guy's from California. No compassion for this guy from California. Things like that, it's one thing, that's one of the things I'm trying to close here. We have a lot of absentee landlords here in the city, listen to the noise. Right now.
We hear it all the time.
Yeah, no, I know, that annoys me, that that annoys me, I'm sorry, it it really annoys me. Um, we we gotta do something, guys, you know, because otherwise this is not. You know, and I don't buy the stories that this is just the way it is, it's a new, new generation, no, I'm sorry, that's BS in my opinion, that. This is Springfield, this is our home, get upset, anyways, uh, where was I, Kathy? Somebody bring me back to.
You're talking about feces and.
Oh, feces, yes, thank you, thank you, uh. Yes, 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 uh, I could be called four times, anyways, uh. Things like that, we shouldn't have anybody like that, so. Uh, this, again, this will also is a way of 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 holding absentee landlords accountable here in Springfield. Um, so. Anything else anybody wants to, uh, I don't think I have heard anything from the. Court enforcement, you guys have anything you wanna contribute or anything, any thoughts? Commission, that's a lot.
Or else, I mean, we just listen to the advice of law department.
Okay, thank you, thank you, um, and so, alright, Councilon, questions?
I'm just, I'm just wondering, I mean, I get the idea of polishing people's names or. Continually disrespectful or don't don't follow the rules. Um, just gotta make sure we really know we're doing it for the for the the re- the right reason. And we're not just trying to punish somebody by, um, putting their name in the public, uh, you know, it's. That that's not good government, I don't think, publishing their names because we wanna collect the bill, that's good government. Uh, publishing their name because we wanna punish them, not so sure about that.
This is why we're giving them three strikes, hundred eighty days, three times. So our proposal talks about three different tickets, and you have a hundred eighty days on each ticket. Um, that's almost a year, over a year, if you really think about it. I mean, if you don't correct the problem, you gotta, you have to celebrate it, uh, so. Alright, I think we've done a lot today, um. What do you guys think if we we convene on thirty days? Uh, maybe the law department can give us suggestions on what was was inappropriate. Fee, again, like I said at the beginning, this is not installed, this is just a draft, this is an attempt. To do what Council on is good governance, and to let people know that we're serious and protect the quality of life here. Uh, maybe you guys can suggest a percentage that you guys think will master legally? Of that, uh, and Kathy, I'm sure you may have some suggestions down the road, uh. It seems to me that a lot of, uh, things are already being done, like putting the lien, uh, the private tax, which is great news. Um, and then the other decision about polishing on the website. Which I think we're determining will be for free and is doable, but we just have to decide what we're gonna polish, whether, yeah, I know you said the name, but. You know, uh.
So I, let me ask you a question about that, uh, Mr. Chairman, um. Are you, are you thinking about the list being a a total comprehensive list list of unpaid fines? That have now lapsed and passed their appellate their appellate period? Or are you looking to only target the three, like a three strikes list for those who have three violations that were unpaid?
Yeah, three violations, three different violations, okay, uh. So it could be this, but it could be this violation again, anyways, just three violations.
The three separate incidents.
Well, I will leave that up to you, uh, because I know you could get a ticket for the same thing over and over, right? And I can tell you somebody in my street gets ticketed for not moving along all the time. And I can tell he got a ticket because when he gets a ticket, then he goes on forward. And then he lets it grow again, and it's just a constant battle, it's just, so just cut the damn gas, anyways, um. I will leave it to your expertise, uh, so, uh, but it would seem to me three strikes. That that's enough, more than time, I'm sorry, that's that's enough.
We try to gather the data if we can.
Yeah, whatever you guys can suggest.
Well, we'll see what that brings up.
So the percentage of the fee and the three strikes, and then what do we polish, then, I know you said the names, the address, uh.
Actually, too, I think it might make sense to look at program, in your proposals, assistance program.
Yes, please.
So it might make sense for us to to look into that too, because I know, you know, there, anytime you set up a program like that, where the, and I think, um. Sir Longan or the solicitor both have probably mentioned it, if there's dis- you know, discretion within the program at some level, at a staff level, you know. Who's making decisions that some people get the assistance, some don't, and you want, you'd wanna make very clear, rigid kind of standards that. Almost doesn't allow for that to happen, or you're not having a discrimination claim, like I think so, between one group or another, that somebody got assistance, somebody didn't. Um, you know, that would be something you wanna look at for sure.
Right, so, uh, uh, please, if you could also get us data on that, so, uh, this is the template, I set the vision. Councilor Santinella, I have set the vision on this, you guys are on City Hall, you guys don't want to avoid, uh.
I just know that, um, doing any kind of waivers or or payment plans require staff and time.
I was waiting for that punchline.
You know, I say that, council. Payment plans for a hundred dollar ticket sometime, I mean, you have to look at, I mean, as is right now, we spend over fifty thousand dollars a year to put liens on properties. Uh, so you do have to take a look at a lot of things.
Is there, do you keep track of the value of that fifty thousand, like, is it, does it come back to us and so?
Because all of these get attached to the, um, to the, uh, the your tax bill. So we do get them back.
So could you produce a report?
So some of them, I mean, I don't.
If they pay it off, we get it back, if they don't, we end up having to foreclose it. So it didn't take a while or something.
But I mean, we, we wanna be like, so the city does that every year, we we post it, and then some, and a lot of these. Uh, ordinance and fees that violations can be attached to property, it's the ones that can't be attached to property are the ones, I think, focusing on, and those are the more challenging ones to collect. That you can't associate if someone's walking down the street drinking a beer and attach them.
Yeah, but but I also think, Kathy, that you're absolutely correct, but also, uh, the office of online discussion, which has not been. And is that the law enforcement has has recovered, because unless the law changed. Walking around with an open container, is that that's an arrest of workers, potentially?
Uh, no, I wanna say it's now, it's been converted to a civil infraction, so it's just simply a fine. If you're walking around with an open container.
Would that be a fine, what would be the difference between?
Also, if you're like an arrestable offense, meaning that they could impact, put you in handcuffs and bring you down, and it's a criminal complaint you'd face in court. Versus a fine where you'd simply have to pay the fine.
But that fine that the cop gives to the person walking with the beer. That is that considering a quality of life or was that a different category of a fine, because it's been given by SPD?
I'm confused.
So the cop gives him a ticket.
Yeah.
Is that fine considered different as opposed to according for to a a a ordinance violation? It is an ordinance in the city, so.
It's good, they're both civil in nature, meaning that you can't arrest them, the the process for what the fine amount is. The appellate process of how they can proceed to appeal that violation is kind of two different things, usually an open container is a state. Driven code and, um, and then anything local is more local ordinance that we that we endorse here.
But but so that I'm clear, um, there is such a thing as state law. About open drinking, probably on the streets.
Yeah, my understanding is there's a state law, there's a there's a prohibition, a statewide prohibition for open containers. So that is one thing, right, so you have an open container that's statewide, everybody, every every municipality has to enforce it the same way. Noise violations are one of those that, some communities have noise violations, some don't, there's no state. Um, there is no state template or state law about it. So inside that vacuum comes municipalities and they impose their own noise violations.
And citation, I'm sorry, so the citation that the officer gives are often the same form, it'll just have boxes and you'll be checking. Mass general law, whatever, and he'll he'll, you know, or city ordinance, whatever, you know, there's a listing of them, so it's. Given the same time and the same way, basically, just a different underlying statute.
That will be processed through PD.
Yeah, it's it's a ticket issued by the PD, yes.
And well, that money, that case is state law, but that money come to us.
Yes.
And so, how will? Somebody doesn't pay the ticket, what happens?
That ticket gets en- entered into Open Gov. Database, but there's no collective.
But it was given with the state law.
Um, yeah, so theoretically, if you have enough tickets that are not paid, and those become, it it reaches a certain level of enforcement where. Think you can convert that into a criminal complaint for failure to pay the tickets. I'd have to look into the exact statutory scheme, but there's a way the rubber meets the road eventually, if you don't pay them all. It would take, I think it turns into a criminal offense.
The the reason I ask, and I find this fascinating, is that one, again, our quality of life, but two. The why are, why are we expecting the cops to do something about this? When there's really nothing that we are empowered to do, if people can just see the. Child, the ticket, right, and and they know there's no consequences, so I'd rather have the cop patrol. You know, I mean, and and there's things out there, and I have spoken to cops and a lot of them have said, and I know I'll open up a whole different kind of worms here. But it's like, we do stuff, but nothing happens, I don't blame the poor guys, right? And we end up paying the price, and then the the procession on the city is, it's a dirty city, it's filled with prostitutes, it's filled with drugs. We got needles in the parks, we got shootings, I mean, come on, this is home, and and yes, I get upset about this because. Sounds good, shit, I do love Springfield, but I I guess what I'm saying is, I. I believe we can come up with solutions that will address our needs, uh, call me crazy, but I like to be optimistic. Um, Kathy, did I cut you out? Alright, so, uh, thirty days, then you guys are gonna come back with those with those items, uh.
What's the action item?
Uh, the action item, they're gonna come back, they're gonna give us a suggestion of percentage, perhaps. That could be attached as a fine, because technically a fine.
Law department.
Yeah, and then, uh, sort of a criterion for polishing the names after three separate, after three incident. Whether they are three separate incidents or the same incident, either way, you have a long time to to correct or reach out. Um, uh, so, again, I would like to say, um, for the record, that the purpose of doing this is not to punish anybody. That's not the business that the city is on, no, should we be, it's not good governance. But we need to settle foot down and say, this is our city, we appreciate quality of life. We all know we have issues with noise, needles in the park, we know we have issues with. Uh, drinking, uh, uh, open containers, you know, we have a lot of issues that we have dipped them in the pot. Uh, we're gonna have problems, so by the way, this is just maybe. A little bit of, uh, the first layer of the onions, because to solve this problem, there's many layers to this, including law enforcement, some. And I know that every administration is different and they have different priorities, I subscribe to the broken theory, broken window theory. And so I think that, uh, we need to. Come up with a real comprehensive plan to start start really putting some teeth into these quality of life issues. Uh, nothing else, guys? No? Okay, uh, guy, uh, Councilon?
One question, is everything that that we're gonna do, will it, is it all documented now or will it be documented? After the next meeting or something?
Will you document it?
Every infraction that there is, this is what happens, you know, so that we can refer back to some. Documentation of, you know, you started it here, is there a clear? You know, in this situation, it goes to your tax bill, in this situation, it doesn't, whatever. Be something for us to refer to, we're gonna start doing this.
Well, I'd like to believe that will be within the audience, so, like I said, this this is just a draft, the one that I put forward. Uh, and so, yeah, we want to be very clear, so that, that's a good point, actually, so that everybody knows exactly what we do, that's a very good point. Any questions for the press? With that being said, then, uh, the time now is, oh, the thirty day, well, I will announce, but we will have a follow-up in the next days. Uh, and with that being said, the time is down three fifty, I would say, Commissioner, you're good to go, nothing else? Good, okay, alright, with that being said, the time is at three fifty, the general government meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody, God bless.